Good evening. I'd like to call the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice has been provided as required under Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five specifying the time, date, and location of this meeting by posting a copy of the notice at the municipal building on the municipal website and providing a copy of the annual notice schedule to the official newspapers of the borough. Notice is also on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Manko.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski is absent. Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Present.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskonka.
Present.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr is absent, and I am here. I am present as well.
Excellent. Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence which will be followed by the salute of the flag.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now is the time for public comment limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is a pub- public portion is limited to the comments only on a resolution listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit as set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Approval of meeting minutes, June ninth, June twenty-third, July seventh. Do you have to do it individually, correction, or you can do it all in one shot?
If you want to do it all in one unless someone has objections to any of them.
Okay. Do it all in one shot. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Ordinance Public Hearing, second reading. The following ordinance was introduced on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, published accordance with the law. If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after reading. Will the clerk please read Resolution, oh, I'm sorry, Ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-one by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter eleven, establishment of police department of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown to establish the position, powers, and duties of captain of police, amend the powers and duties lieutenant of police, and establish the duties of sergeant of police.
May I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Now I will open up the public hearing on Ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-one. Please state your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to this ordinance only. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Does any council member have any comments? Seeing none.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I got a question. This is for the police dispatch?
No.
Oh, this is for the police contract?
No, no.
Department.
It's for the department.
Was that fifty-one, two-seventy-one?
Twenty-five fifteen.
Twenty-five fifteen.
We're on the ordinance.
On the ordinance.
Oh, it says two-seventy-one. Okay, I got it. I'm sorry.
No worries. Okay, it's okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we will have authorizing the payments of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-two five dash two sixty-seven by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of, oh, I'm sorry, we're in municipal obligations?
Yep.
Correct, okay. Six million, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. Is there any questions?
Yes, I just want to ask Phil a question. Phil, there's a one-call on the page, sixteen. It says one-call concepts. I don't know if you know what that is?
Who's the vendor, John?
One-call concepts.
One-call concepts?
I think that's the...
I had the same question because I was under the impression that we had gone away from one-call. That's one of my questions to Fred. It sort of should have replaced Civic Alert, so I don't know if it's contractual or not, but once Mr. Carr comes out, he'll figure that out.
Thanks, Phil.
You agree, Councilman?
Nope, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters under, listed under the consent agenda are to be considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated on as a separate matter. Any items require an expenditure or support of a certi- certification of funds. If any member of the council wants any resolutions acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull two-zero-two-five-two-seven-two and two-zero-two-five-two-seven-seven.
Is that it?
Yep. Oops, sorry. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we'll look, uh, clerk, please read the consent agenda resolution, please.
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions presented before the Borough Council at its August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council: Resolutions two-four, twenty-two-five-two-forty-seven through twenty-two-five-two-seventy-one, Resolutions twenty-two-five-two-seventy-three through twenty-two-five-two-seventy-six, and Resolutions two, twenty-two-five-two-seventy-eight through Resolution twenty-two-five-two-eighty-eight. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above-listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each was read in its entirety at the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Potter, seconded by Council President Zambranas. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-two-five-two-seven-two by title?
Resolution twenty-two-five-two-seventy-two, authorizing board of contract under fair and open process, Borough Planner, M.J. Planning, L.L.P.
With the pleasure, Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a question on this. It doesn't, it says this is in effect from August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Do we, and it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour. Do we know how many hours he usually bills?
I don't know that there is a regular number of hours, Councilman. It's really based upon what type of work we task him with. So typically, our planner has assisted us with our affordable housing obligation, has assisted us with Ford Avenue redevelopment, and also the planning board. So it's really a function of what we task them, and that's the hourly rate.
Demand function, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Any, um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, sir.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution twenty-two-five dash two-seventy-seven by title?
Authorizing Community Energy Plant Services, Global Associates, I'm sorry, Gable Associates Incorporated.
With the pleasure, Council?
Yes, I had a couple of questions on this. It says here, it's the total project cost is ten thousand dollars. Is this all covered by a grant? It's all covered by a grant?
It is.
But then it says there's a fifty thousand dollar charge here somewhere.
The certifications of funds was changed. You had a second pack of resolutions there.
Oh, okay.
It was updated this morning.
So it's just ten thousand dollars, right?
Yes, it is.
And it's all covered by a grant?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to know.
Excellent.
Thanks.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, Mayor.
Excellent. Reports and comments from elected officials. Council President Zambranas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one short report tonight, and that's really a shout-out. Two weeks will be September first. September first is the deadline for registration for Milltown Day, which will be September twenty-seventh, a Saturday from ten a.m. to three p.m. You can go to recreation site. You can look for Milltown sponsorships. We encourage everyone to register using Community Pass. It makes it easier for everybody all around, and we look forward to everyone having a wonderful day that day. That day will be rain or shine. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Yes, I have Councilman Pozzanski's reports, too. I'll read after mine. I just have the library report. The summer reading program was very successful. The library will now have two yoga instructors, two classes in the morning, and two classes per, in the evening, per month. Please call the library to inquire about it on Tuesday, I might have frozen it later. On Tuesday, August nineteenth, Estate Planning one-oh-one, that's tomorrow night at six p.m. Please call to register. Wednesday, August twentieth and twenty-seventh, Sketch Club at one p.m. for ages four to ten, please call to register. Saturday, August twenty-third and September sixth, Crocheting at eleven a.m. Monday, August twenty-fifth, Journaling at eleven a.m. Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, Drop-In Play at ten-thirty p.m. Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, Library Book Club at six p.m. Wednesday, August twenty-seven, two-thirty p.m., Movie Cool Hand Luke with Paul Newman. Two, Thursday, August twenty-eighth, Storytime Babes and Tots, ten-thirty a.m. and all ages, eleven-thirty. Thursday, August twenty-eighth, Bingo with Debbie M. at the Senior Center at twelve-thirty p.m. Tuesday. September second, Estate Planning for Basics at three p.m. Wednesday, September third, two-thirty p.m., Movie Dead Poet Society, Robin Williams. Please note, no Storytime on Thursday, August twenty-first and September fourth. The library will be closed Saturday, August thirtieth, and Monday, September first. And that concludes my report. Do you want me to read Councilman Pozzanski's report, or you want to wait till he comes up?
Um, either or, it doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll wait till he comes up.
Okay. Councilman Manko?
Uh, so regarding the water in the sewer department, the following report, I will say the hydrants were replaced at fifty-seven Janet Court and two-oh-six North Moats Drive. And just in case for people who don't know, that is something we used to pay a considerable amount from outside sources to do, and over the last, I don't know, few years, I'll say three, four, we've hired a few people who have the ability to do that internally at a much better, at a much cost-saving to the town. And it's important to understand that it is good to invest in our water and electric system. I'm glad we're buying them some new vehicles because they have been undersupervised for quite some time. No particular fault of anyone, just simple economics, but sometimes it just is what it is. You want good service, we have to support them. With that said as well, the electrical department replaced a blown transformer that was on Henry Street. A wire transformer was completed on Mary Court to a previously set pole. Tree limbs that have caused outages on South Thurst and the surrounding area were cleared and the power was restored. Street lighting was repaired as needed. Line clearance was performed in various areas. And with that said, this is a very, very hot summer, and the taxing that it puts on the grid, that it puts on our staff, that I just appreciate that our town is positive and supportive and patient. Things happen, and no matter where you are, no matter who is providing your service, things are going to happen. And if power goes out at two a.m., at noon, on a hot day, on a cold day, it's never going to get fixed fast enough. But our guys are consistently there, and they try, and they do everything they can. So I just appreciate the town keeping that in mind and supporting our guys, as we all do. Believe that to be it?
Thank you. Councilwoman Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Police Department, between July first, two thousand twenty-five and July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, the police responded to thirteen-hundred and forty-two calls for service. During this period, the police conducted ninety-three radar details in numerous locations. Police made five-hundred-and-ninety-seven motor vehicle stops during this period. Police investigated sixteen motor vehicle accidents. Twenty-one arrests were made, eight for shoplifting, six DWIs, five for active warrants, one possession of controlled dangerous substances, and one possession of drug paraphernalia. Just a reminder to, if you don't have the app, right, remembering that Nix will switch to Civic Ready. If you want to receive emergency messages only, text the word MILTOWN to three-eight-two-seven-six. The non-emergency line for the Police Department is seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-eleven-hundred. In case of emergencies, always dial nine-one-one. Concerns that do not need to be addressed immediately can also be submitted on the Borough's website under reported concern. On behalf of the Milltown Fire Department, for this month, for the month of July, I'm sorry, there were thirty-four total incidents, and the total number of incidents for the year is five-hundred-and-seventy-one. There were two notable fire calls, one on seven-four on Hague Avenue, and that was during the parade. That, that, they looked into that. And then also on seven-six, they assisted the Highland Park Fire Department cover for a fire that was happening in Milltown. The Fourth of July, as reported by the MFD, went very well for them and for, of course, all the rest of us. Almost every member participated in the events of the day. The Milltown Fire Department went to Highland Park. That is what I refer to in terms of fire protection. The department sadly paid respects to a North Brunswick Fire Company number-one firefighter, Steve Smith. The department was very busy planning for drills and preparing the firehouse for Fourth of July and the fireworks standby. And there were also several of the vehicles at the Fire Department were serviced and outfitted, and there was a very lively month of drills. One of them included an early August live burn. I learned all about live burns. I asked to buy that. They would like to give a special shout-out to Ralph for the A.C. units that he provided as the borough is getting the HVAC systems repaired. And members are needed, as always. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse Monday nights at six-thirty p.m. or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. And my last report is for the Milltown Rescue Squad. During the month of July, there were a hundred and ten calls, sixty of those in Milltown, fifteen on the Turnpike, and others split between rescue, rehab, standby, and mutual aid. The Rescue Squad will be holding a blood drive on September twenty-first from nine to three p.m., and you can sign up at www.nyc... C... dot org slash letizia. Thank you to everyone that went, came out for National Night Out and saw all the demonstrations that the Rescue Squad provided. Like the Fire Department, they are always looking for new talent. Anyone interested in joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment at milltownrescuesquad.org. Applications for October twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five need to be submitted by September fifteenth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Collins reading Councilman Pozzanski's reports?
Pothole repairs ongoing. Street sweeping is ongoing. Outfall pipes are clean per DEP regulations. Quarterly catch basin is being cleaned and completed. Tree removal on Christopher Street. Tree cleanup at JFK. Dead tree was removed. New safety material was installed at various playgrounds around the town. New recycling cans were picked up for the first time on eight-eleven. We appreciate everyone's patience. As this is new for Milltown, our grant-funded recycling drop will be de, open designated Saturday mornings from eight a.m. till twelve p.m. at the DPW at fifty Washington Avenue. Except items are cardboard, metal, electronics, tires, two pieces of bulk. We're not accepting glass and cans at this time. Please call seven-three-two-eight-two-eight-twenty-one-hundred, extension one-thirty-six for day of operations. Let's see what we got. They had a recycling meeting on July twenty-ninth at six p.m. We went over numerous questions with appropriate answers for the transparency of the residents so as to be informed. Change is difficult. We had this meeting taped to be viewed on Channel fifteen and YouTube. Again, for the residents concerned, concerns to be addressed, please be patient during this time of transition. This is a county program that the DEPW and the council is helping to facilitate, facilitate, and I'd like to make a special thanks to Ralph Juznuska and Beth and the Public Works for their help during this trying time. Milltown Senior Center report, all classes and activities participants must be sixty-year-old or with no exceptions. The remaining August trips include Tuesday, August nineteenth, bus trip to Amazing Savings and Howl. The bus will leave at nine-thirty a.m. Monday, August twenty-fifth, bus trip through Ollies and Trader Joe's in Lawrenceville. The bus will leave nine-thirty a.m. Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, bus trip to the Barge Restaurant in Perth Amboy. The bus will leave at eleven a.m. Water Aerobics will be held Wednesday and Fridays at nine-thirty a.m. Throughout the month of August, no advance sign-up is required. The VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Tuesday, August nineteenth. Services available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up at the bulletin board. Let's see what else we have here. We have a weekly lunch program on Wednesdays sponsored by Elijah's Promise Soup Kit Soup at Wednesdays twelve-thirty p.m. Please check the calendar for dates. There is such a need for shelters that we will continue collecting throughout the year. This includes unopened dog and cat food, litter, and unused toys and accessories. We are having a bingo sponsored by the Milltown Library on Thursday, August twenty-eighth at twelve p.m., twelve-thirty p.m. All seniors are welcome to attend. And that concludes the reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Milltown Recreation Summer Highlights and upcoming events. We had an incredible summer at Abbot Avenue Camp with perfect weather and no missed days over the entire six-week season. Campers enjoyed theme days, pool days, exciting trips, and the highlight of the summer, Carnival Day, which was a huge success. Despite a slow start due to the weather, the pool season rebounded with amazing hot days. A special thank you to Lisa and her amazing Snack Shack team for bringing fun and delicious new treats each week. Their contributions have been a fantastic addition to the pool experience. Join us for the final day of the pool season on Labor Day, Monday, September first, from twelve noon to eight p.m. Enjoy activities for kids and music by DJ Chris Velez from Roar, Roar Music Productions. This event is open to Milltown residents and badge holders only. Our first floating sound bath was on this past Thursday, August fourteenth, was amazing and sold out. Due to popular demand, we're hosting another session this Wednesday, August twentieth. Space is limited. Please register via Community Pass. Pre-teen nights have been a big hit this summer. Only two nights remaining with the final event on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. The Splash Crowd is wrapping up a great season. Our final mini-meet is scheduled for Sunday, August twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, our Christmas in July event was canceled due to inclement weather. However, it's been rescheduled for this Friday, August twenty-second. There's still time to register for this festive celebration. Adult and youth program registrations open this week. Adult programs include yoga, Pilates, women's volleyball, men's basketball, and co-ed softball. For youth programs, they include fall soccer, flag football, multi-sports, tennis, chess, musical theater, and creative movement. We hosted our second round of basketball clinics this summer with Sandy Molnawski, and the turnout was excellent across all age groups. These clinics are a great opportunity for both beginners and experienced players to develop their skills. We were organizing a group outing to record a football game on Friday, September nineteenth, at eight p.m. against Iowa. A flyer will be coming out soon with ticket purchase details and parking discount information. We're in the early planning stages for our September eleventh candlelight vigil to be held at the American Legion Pavilion at seven p.m. More details will be shared soon. Planning a family picnic or birthday celebration? Consider it Abbot Avenue Park for your event. Contact the Recreation Department and reserve your date. Please be sure to visit our Recreation webpage to familiarize yourself with the upcoming programs and help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a community in motion. From the Planning Board, the meeting in August was canceled, and the next scheduled meeting is for Wednesday, September third. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. I have a brief report. Earlier this month, the Schwindeman Homestead Committee met so we could start to get some preliminary ideas down and try to schedule the next meeting that will be coming up soon, and then I'll provide another report from there. That's the end of my report. Report from Borough Professionals, Peter Vignolo?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. CME, Lou?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a report on the water meter project. To date, two thousand one hundred and thirty-three meters have been replaced, which is equivalent to approximately eighty-two percent of the total. Sixty-four others are incomplete. One-hundred-and-ninety-six are currently scheduled, and unfortunately, there are still one-hundred-and-ninety-three replacements that are not yet scheduled, and we need those residents, obviously, to contact the contractor and get those scheduled. Secondly, there was a discussion at the last meeting about funding for lead service replacements. It's our understanding that there is a line item in the state budget for one million dollars for Milltown for the lead service lines. Once the budget is passed and that money is available, there's a number of tasks that are going to need to happen to basically do that project. The first thing is the Borough will need to introduce a spending ordinance to formally accept the grant. Adopt any resolutions as necessary to authorize the expenditure of the funds. The Borough will need to meet with the grant coordinator to review the scope of the project and any reporting requirements associated with the grant. The service line inventory will need to be compiled. As the council knows, that is going on with the water meter project. To date, we have fifty-four lead services identified, but as I noted, one-hundred-and-ninety-three replacements have not yet been scheduled, so we have not been in those homes to determine if they have lead or not. Once the total number of lead lines are known, the project costs will need to be estimated. Those costs would then be compared to the grant to determine if there's sufficient funding available. The Borough may need to introduce an ordinance authorizing the access to the private properties to do the work. Once all that's done, we'll move into design phase for the project, develop the contract documents and construction cost estimates. We would work with the Borough's QPA to put a bid out. The bids would be reviewed once they're received. Then there would be contracts executed for the construction, and a notice to proceed would be issued to the contractor. That would move us into the construction phase where we would hold a pre-construction meeting, perform site observations of the service replacements, and ultimately, once the work is done, the project would be closed out, and any grant coordination to close out the grant would be done. And that concludes our report, Mr. Mayor.
A quick question to Lou. The grant, is there a estimated timeframe when they're going to be looking to pass the state budget? The grant, is there a estimated timeframe when they're going to be looking to pass the state budget?
About two months.
Two months from now? Okay. And then we should know shortly after that? Okay. And then I guess then would you be able to work with Mr. Vignolo to try to coordinate whether we need the resolutions first and so on and so forth?
And Mr. Carr for sure.
And Mr. Carr, obviously, yes. Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Lou, quick question. What would be the timeframe once the budget's passed? There was a lot of information you put. What do you think the timeframe would be? Some budget passed to when you can.
The design of this project should go very quickly. I would say thirty to sixty days to get the documents prepared.
Oh, I got a question. You're going to make sure it coordinates meter replacement with the line replacement, correct?
Well, the meters will all be replaced at that time, by that time. So this would be for the lead lines.
Oh, so they can replace the meter without the lead lines?
They may need to take the meters out and put them back in, but the meters will be there by that time.
Thanks.
Excellent. Administrator Borough Clerk, correction?
Just one item, Mayor. We are currently looking for poll workers, anyone interested in working on Election Day on November fourth, I believe it is. It is a long day, but there is payment for the day. Anybody interested, please call the Borough Clerk's office.
Thank you. Old business, does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
I do have just a brief mention that I don't know how to impress upon the town that these remaining one hundred and ninety-three, it is mandatory these meters have to get done. And at some point, it's going to be going to be, there's going to be a financial penalty or a lack of water in the household if they aren't done. It's not a nice way to say it, but it's simply the reality. They have to be done and it's getting later and later in the year. We are, I mean, actually, that's under ten percent, which is a great accomplishment. But it just bears mentioning that it really needs to be done. If anyone knows anyone who hasn't had it done yet, implore them that, you know, that the time will be coming and it will be uncomfortable. But it's got to happen. It's the good of the town. It's just the way it's going to be. It saves the town a lot of money. It helps with billing. It helps with personnel. Everything we don't like about our bills, we have something we can do about it. And that's what this is. Got to look at it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of business have any, I'm sorry. Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council? See none, all right. Open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when come to the podium. Just a reminder, as under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during their public input part of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes and then may, after others have, speakers have finished, may be allowed to speak for a second five minute period.
All right, good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Leo Wagner. I live at sixty-three Janet Court. And I'd like to talk about parks. First, I'd like to say I'm really happy with the progress that was done on Albert Ave Park with the new bike path. I took my bike on it the other day and I think it's a good addition to the town. What I'd like to bring to your attention is in another park on Janet Court, the Janet Court Pocket Park. There's a path there. It's not in very good shape. It's full of potholes, rubble and lots of standing water. I think that attention should be paid to it because I think it would be a good addition to my neighborhood to have a nicer path. I mean, it's a neighborhood where a lot of young families live. It's a good place. I mean, when I was young, I learned to ride my bike there. And I think, you know, right now, it's not so safe. Lots of potholes, dead trees, standing water leads to mosquitoes. So I think that park definitely used some TLC, I suppose. And I thought I'd bring that to your attention.
I, Leo, I made a note of that.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Councilman Potter.
Is that the fire road? What's that? Is that the fire road?
Yeah, that is the fire road.
Okay. All right.
What's commonly referred to as the dinosaur park.
Yeah.
Which in, yeah, I will mention that I don't think that park has, there've been a lot of updates to a lot of the parks in towns, a lot of bigger parks over the past few years. And that park hasn't really gotten much attention over the past. I live closer to that and I do see where, and again, I know some years ago, over the past few years, there had been some patching done where they've done stone to fill in some of those potholes.
Yeah.
But it was, it's not a long term fix. And it would be nice if the town could look into that.
Yeah, I think it would be a good addition to the neighborhood, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep, cool. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Leo.
Thanks.
Debbie Miller, ninety-two Ford Avenue. I have a question regarding the lead line grant. If all goes well with that, is there enough money to accommodate all the people that may need to have that improvement done? And if not, will it go to like a lottery?
So the, unfortunately, we don't know the total count on the lead lines. So we can't do that assessment until we get all that data in. If it stayed the way it was now, it looks promising.
Maybe, maybe that's one reason some people are nervous to have their water meter checked because they know that the lines will be checked as well. So maybe with knowing that there might be some money for them, maybe they'll come forward.
That's a good point, exactly. Thank you.
And then the other thing that I would like to say is I run the monthly bingos at the library. And this past Saturday, we had Lucky Cat and we partnered with Karma Cat. And they brought some kittens for the people that came to play with and the kittens ran around. So if anybody is in need to adopt a cat or cats or kitten or kittens, I'm sure they would be happy to help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou, what I would, what I would like to recommend or if we see, because we had the conversations, if it was approximately ten thousand dollars a line to replace, plus or minus, we'd have approximately, you know, eighty, eighty to one hundred. The residents that actually went through the effort of getting their meters replaced and identified soon versus us chasing them down, I think they should go on the top of the list regardless to get their meters replaced because they went through the effort already.
Absolutely.
So just a recommendation, I think we should capture that to take care of them first since they went through the effort.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Siegel from one eleven South Main Street. Thank you for the follow up with regards to the lead pipe. I was here last month and I was a little concerned with what was going to occur and what wasn't going to occur. I concur with, I apologize if I didn't catch your name, but her comment with regards to why people aren't coming forth with regards to changing their water meters. But the other concern is something that actually I experienced with a rental property I had in Highland Park, which might also be part of the problem that you're having here in Milltown. They had the water meter replacement program, just like we're having here. And because of the water meter that was being taken out, the sensor outside the building did not read the water meter inside correctly. I was actually subsequently handed a fifty-five hundred dollar bill for water because the meter inside was actually reading correctly, but the one outside, which was generating the water bills, was not. So it's possible that your citizens are concerned that they're going to get hit with a water bill here that they're not expecting. Again, I experienced it. There's little recourse because the water meter is what the water meter is. And you may want to address that issue somehow. Going towards, I was here last time and you guys were talking about the recycling. I actually went down to the municipal, I guess, center and I wanted to get a second can and I was told that they're not available. I said, well, I'll purchase one. I don't care. I need one for my front of my building, one for the back. I participate actively in the recycling and I'm told that they're not available. The county hasn't allotted enough. And so my question comes is what is the timeframe for that possibility? If it's going to be a possibility, otherwise I will address it some other way.
I think if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Manko, some of the residents didn't even get their cans yet.
I heard that. No, I agree. But again, and I'm asking the question because.
What I do understand, I do know that some have not received, actually one of those. But the other thing that I want to understand is that part of, part of the second can question is simply that the, I believe the county is part of the reason that they've given the one can and they've gone big with that. And again, I'm not exactly sure of this because it's more on the DPW side. But the, it seems that that is their allotment and how they're managing the town to give one can. And that's what they'd be picking up. In order to pick up extra cans is going to take also more time and in their mathematical formula of how all that works. I'm just not sure how that's going to fit in.
Mr. Siegel.
I do know that our DPW has stepped up and in their program, what they're planning is on, they're going to have, I believe, a couple Saturdays per month. This was the first Saturday of it, where they were open on Saturday and they were going to be collecting cardboard and other recyclables to help with the overflow. And because of the way that they're situated, they're also usually there on the weekends most of the winter and the fall. And the holidays that we're typically, we're going to have more recycling, more cardboard. They will be able to help you with that internally in the town with a simple drop off.
To be quite frank, I'm not worried about the cardboard because cardboard I can handle. It's the, being honest, I mean, it's the cans. I mean, I see them all over town. I mean, it's, it's really unsanitary. But with that having been said, I'm talking about the cans, the bottles and things of that nature, which seem to fly elsewhere. And the way my building is situated, I have an apartment in the front of the building and an apartment in the back. And so my tenant in the back is not going to the front. And I'm trying to alleviate a potential situation. That's why I was asking the question.
Okay, so I mean, I misunderstood. The, just to make sure, if you're registered as a, as two, being two different.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, residences, then you should get your can eventually. I mean, I was kind of going with the other side where some places are not going to get, if a place is three, three residences and only one on paper, they only receive one can. And I believe that that will be the way that's going to be. But then you should get yours, the timeframe. I know our DPW did hand out some of the ones that they managed to acquire or redesignate, I think was properly the word, because they were trying to help. But they just, apparently, a few of the local towns, a few other towns in this area that fall into the same contract and package, they are also short. We are short by roughly a hundred. Where I believe some of the other towns that are larger are short by by considerably larger numbers. New Jersey, you know, does really well with stuff like this.
Then the, actually, last question. And I actually called it, okay.
Actually, I was going to say, Mr. Siegel, I just want to, I'm not sure about two cans for a two-family house. So I can try to get an answer to that for you. I know with respect to the rollout of multiple cans for a single residence. I know Mr. Jazanowski was trying to see how it played out a little bit. And I can try to get an answer as to how long they're going to wait because, as you might imagine, most people with two-family houses immediately said, we need two cans. We just, we automatically need it, doesn't matter, we.
I wouldn't mind even paying for it.
No, and I can appreciate that. But I think to the extent that this is being rolled out across the county and everybody's just trying to get an understanding of how much is really generated, how much is going to fit in a ninety-six gallon can and how many cans we need because it is a commitment for a five-year obligation. You obviously have indicated you would pay for it. You'll bear that obligation. It's part of your cost of doing business. Not everybody is necessarily willing to do that. So I think there's going to be some questions and some parameters that need to be worked out as we move along. And I think it's just going to take a little time. So we'll see if we can get as far as answers for that.
I appreciate that. Of course.
Jim Poles from the Executive Director of Middlesex County Improvement Authority came down and was talking about that, you know.
I was here about that.
Right, it's in the works. They're all barcoded too. So if you have two families, they're going to have to put another barcode on your, you know, your apartments. You know, one for one apartment, one for the other, so they don't get interchanged or lost or stolen. So that's what, you know, I don't think they realize that they have to make, you know, for the same address, they have to put two different barcodes on. So I guess they're working on it.
Okay. We'll wait, see how it plays out.
It could be a while.
The last thing is, is as I, we're all so used to just coming and going up and down Main Street. And I was actually on my way to the meeting here and quite frankly, I saw a number of items just laid out on Main Street. People were just putting out there, let's say I saw a washing machine down on somebody's lawn. Now, I'm not quite sure whether that was just being ready to get for bulk pickup. But I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble here, but I'm just concerned about the overall appearance of the town, quite frankly. Because that is Main Street and it's an important part of the town. And because the rest of the town is really nice, I take pride in ownership. And I'm just curious, and I did see a code enforcement car recently this week. And I'm just curious as to what's going on with regards to, I guess, bulk pickup and checking on the appearances of the town.
I know code enforcement drives around quite a bit. He's always sending warning letters and summonses.
And Mr. Siegel, there is a report of concern. I know that obviously you identify things and you wonder when they might be addressed. I know from personal experience that if you do reach out and you either report a concern or reach out to the zoning officer directly and make it more of a situation, he will look into it. So I'm not placing the onus on you, but just like everything else, if you have to wait for him to realize there is a problem, it may take longer than pointing it out to him.
Okay, very good. Enjoy. Happy evening.
Thank you, please. Thank you.
Lee Weisenberger, ninety-nine JFK Drive. I got a little chain of stuff here. We'll start with something easy. The water tank. Over by Home Depot.
Yes, sir.
Is that a direct feed from New Brunswick?
No.
To that tank? No. So the main feed from Brunswick goes many different directions?
The water from New Brunswick comes into Delkens Lane. And Delkens then pressurizes to your system and fills the tank.
Right. I'm just wondering about the metering. How accurate it is?
Meter is actually in New Brunswick at the connection where your transmission main comes from.
How often they change that meter?
The borough's utility department would be able to answer that. It's not something that we're involved in.
Right, because like I said, our water meters over the years have been replaced many times from sediment.
Meters like that are usually calibrated on a regular basis. I'm not sure this one has.
Yeah, but I'm driving it leaks because like I said, our standard water meters get replaced all the time because of sediment.
The transmission main is about twenty-five years old, as I remember. And so it's probably due for calibration, has been done already.
Right. I said.
It's a different kind of meter than residential. It's what's called a turbine meter.
But with that water tank, what's the status of that broken line under the turnpike?
Line has been valved off and the condition exists.
How many years?
I'd say probably over, a little over a year, maybe two.
Probably longer. I believe we were looking for grant money to help with that?
That's correct.
Were you still looking? No progress?
There's a grant program that we've advised the borough. It's a loan program from the DEP, which would finance that. It's through the, it's basically a I-bank situation at DEP. They will pay and for the project and then the borough has to pay back over probably thirty years. Low interest rate.
I'm just curious, I give Mr. Zambrana credit, like I said, knocking on doors, finding grant money for water projects. Like I said, that one's been hanging around for a while now.
So good thing that you brought that up because it's a million dollars. If you do a back of the envelope, I don't really know how many, you know, we have, we have fifty, fifty something, right, that are documented. Let's just say we don't go above seventy or eighty. Still like two hundred grand that's laying around, right? The nice thing about grant money sometimes is you can go back to the state and you can say, hey, by the way, thank you so much for this money. We have this much left over and I'd like to roll it over into this over here. Nine out of ten times, they say, yeah, sure, go right ahead. So not to say that there's going to be money there, you know, to kind of help with that situation with the pipe underneath the turnpike, perhaps. But again, there's always next year, you get in your assemblyments here, hey, by the way.
Well, that's the point.
I need some more money.
To keep knocking on the door. Now's the perfect time.
Yeah. Well, you knock on the door the whole year. Well, you knock on the door the whole year, but when it comes around spring of next year, three months before the budget, that's when you got to hit the market.
Either way, I mean, I'll give you the money, you get a bigger knocker and put it on the door.
Yeah.
You know, make sure they hear you.
Yep.
But, that's okay, but with water, again, stormwater management, you think that could be stretched to include curbing?
You have to explain what you mean, I'm not sure what you mean.
Main Street, the curbs, that are nonexistent in a lot of places, in disrepair for many, many years. That water is supposed to be directed to the storm sewers, but it wrecks property, puts mud, puts sediment, puts debris into the storm system. You know, curb would solve a little bit of that. Once again, DEP, I get it, tough outfit. But...
Main Street's also a county road, I mean, the question is, whose jurisdiction is the curb? That's been a matter of debate, I guess, for some years.
Well, that's the point on knocking.
Mm-hmm.
Like you said, knock on the door, they don't care about the curbing.
Curbs, curbs are good, but as you come into Milltown...
Yeah.
...from New Brunswick, I wouldn't replace any curb until you put some drains somewhere.
Okay.
Because if it's like a five or six-block area, there's not one drain in place, and when it comes down, it's just like a river. So, take care of that first, stand in, you do the curbs at the same time.
Okay.
Again, it's just knocking on the door, just trying to get somebody to pay attention.
And last meeting, got a little distracted. Like I said, I put that article up about the Chain of Lakes, Orange Brook, and, like I said, the cubic yardage to, you know, remove that sediment. And the point of that was that, that article, their solution to that was use less water. I mean, that's the DEP. And I did some more research, New Jersey hasn't built a reservoir since 1971, and the one that was refurbished then was a city reservoir, just a dinky little reservoir. So I don't know who's, why we're paying these people for these kind of solutions, I think it's ridiculous. But when we applied for the de-snagging permit, me personally, looking at this now, afterthoughts, it's not the way to go. That Chain of Lakes concerns our neighboring towns all the way up. I don't know how often you meet with the other mayors, I think we need a big discussion with them, and we need to turn the tables, because the DEP is not helping anybody. They're helping some people, but not us. That's a water source, that's the part that gets me. Because that grant that was sent in, I got, I offered the DEP to get that grant, and who else got the money? I was shocked, the towns that received money, and for stupid stuff. So, I want to turn the tide. I want to get the towns together, send them a document, a letter, something, and face-to-face, or bring them down here, and say, "What do you want us to do? You're controlling this, we're telling you, we got to, we got to clean it up, and you guys don't want to do anything." I mean, that's crazy. Like I said, we don't need them then, get rid of the whole DEP, I don't care, you know, give that money to the towns, and we'll, we'll take care of it. So, like I said, it's a suggestion. Like I said, to talk to the other mayors, because they're all contributing to the sediment and everything else, you know, so let's figure it out, let's do something. But, I'm going to bring up another little one, and I'll start with the fact, I think you all know, New Jersey Turnpike Authority and me, bad relationship for 50 years. They don't care for anybody next to that turnpike, they just keep their road going, and that's it. My neighbor was in contact with them recently about the overgrowth again, the root systems coming through the yards, the poison ivy, everything else, this is what you get. That's got to change. I don't know whose door we got to knock on, and with the state too, but it's got to, it's got to change. They don't maintain the drains, they don't do anything, you know? So, once again, it's a sad situation, and our yards are sinking, our houses are taking a beating, but like I said, to fight them, good luck. So, now I'm going to move on to something a little more serious. Mill Pond, 8601, the block, Lot 1. Been going at this a long time. Recently, I found out some more information. I'll correct something, that the tax assessor's readout that was provided to CME about the parcels in town, I did not know that the date on that is one year late. So that means that was submitted to the assessor in December of 2019. We believe it was given to the assessor. As of the other day, I have found no documentation anywhere that Milltown owns that property. No deeds, no nothing, county, state. This can't be. Tonight, I want to know. Once again, we've touched on it, there's a process, there's gain property, sell property, has to go through the council, got to agree on it, whether to purchase it or not. Something like Mill Pond, got to be a title search. The town did a title search, bona fide, 1997. Boaray, when they put the application in, which was approved because of his title searches, he got the go-ahead. That came up in 2019 again, the review memo by CME, showing ownership to Mr. Berger. Yet the end of that year, we attain that property with no evidence, no nothing? It's impossible. It's impossible. So I want to know tonight, who has the authority? Who signed what document? The mayor, finance director? I don't know, the attorney? Who signed what? How could this happen? I better get an answer tonight, because the authorities are going to get this real soon. This can't be. We had a big problem in the 80s, and the state came in here and took over our finances. If you want that again, we can do that. I'm giving you the answer, everybody here has been on planning boards and everything else over the years. What transpired here? What's going on? Silence is not an answer. Title search on the railroad trestle, April of '24. Do we know who owns it yet? Mr. Vanola.
Mr. Weisenberger. I answer questions that my mayor or my council members ask me to do.
I'll go through the mayor. Could you ask our attorney, the trestle title search, who owns it?
Well, the trestle, we know Mr. Berger owns the trestle.
Very good. The previous title searches that came up, Mr. Boaray's title searches, all show Berger owns it.
Mm-hmm.
So what's going on?
Nothing, he owns it.
I understand that, but how did title come into Milltown now that we own it? That's what's on the assessor's record, that's what's in the county.
I can't answer to that, I know he owns that.
Got to put on the tax maps.
I think you two gentlemen are discussing two different things at this point. I believe Mr. Weisenberger is discussing the pond at this point, not the, not the train trestle. So, I think with respect to the pond, you certainly have the title searches, I don't know that anyone here has any idea how the assessor designated that as being owned by Milltown, and I don't know that anybody has looked into it, I know you have looked into it.
And, like I said, I find out now in '25, May, the planning board now approved something else now, with ownership in our name. There's multiple things like this. Like I said, this can't keep going. Like I said, I've had it to here, other people have had it to here, we got to resolve this quickly, because I'm ready to push the button. And that's it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
My name is Lola Garcia, I live at 36 North Main Street, my husband. In reviewing the Borough recycle contract that Oprah Conley sent to me, on Schedule A, it says that there is another option of getting a container for $15.52 additional. I, I, I understand that it takes time to assess, I understand that the rollout and the process takes time, I get it. I know, because I come from downtown Brooklyn, New York City, I get it, but what we want, what my husband and I want, is just reassurance that once everything is assessed and established, that we will get that opportunity. And we haven't received that confident answer that we would get there. We don't mind waiting, and we don't mind paying, but it does take our personal time to have to cut boxes and pieces and crush cans. We both work an average of 60 hours a week individually, so, and we're in the process of adopting children, so that's just going to take more of our time. So we just want the assurance that the option's going to be there. Now, oh, well, it might get there, it will be there. I mean, I read the contract, it's there, it's written, so obviously, it will be there, right? So, that's just one concern, if you can just reassure us that. The other one is that, we live on north side of Main Street, and just within this month, we had one accident of a car that flipped over, we had a deer that was hit. My husband came out, because no one was there, so he had to put something to stop and put some cones there, I work in construction, so we had to put some safety cones there so nobody, but it's so dark, and cars are still speeding, that even though we had something to, to prevent them from passing, the car still speeded and hit the deer again and drove it. So, for the past year, we've seen many different things on that street, and we were wondering if there could be safety lights, I know that lights can be a concern for residents, because everybody sleeps at night, but maybe, I can't even think of the, the reflector to be there. When that car, and then earlier this summer, there was another car that hit the light pole, which stopped all the lights. I mean, it gets really dark, and then, especially when they're coming out of US1, it's like they don't think, and they just continue speeding, even though it says that there's a radar. But maybe a reflector so that this won't occur, obviously, it's becoming even more concerned, because we're adopting, I don't want the kids to come out and get hurt, especially our neighbors, you know, they have kids. So those are the two things.
So just to answer your question, will you approve the speed study tonight? So, I'm glad seeing you, he's here, hearing your concerns, because they're going to be the ones taking that information as well, and providing it to us, so, so thank you very much for providing that information.
Thank you.
And I, I know our Milltown Police Department was out that whole entire next day, throughout the night.
Yeah, they are, the police department here is amazing.
So, they...
Amazing, you guys are amazing.
After that occurred, they were out there, I commend them for, for just, they basically had the car there, and if anybody was speeding through there, they pulled them over, and summons them, so...
Oh, yeah, no complaints, the police department here is amazing, they really are, they're great, you have a great team, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. I don't have any comments. I'd like to introduce Resolution 2025-289. If the clerk can please read that.
Written full, sir. You want me to read the resolution again?
Just by title?
Entering executive session, Resolution 2025-289.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So, second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilman Collins. May, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Are we staying here?
We can stay here.
Okay. At this time, we ask, request if everyone can leave the council chambers for executive session, and then after, we'll open it back up. Thank you.